Coming up next, special event coverage on ICAT Government Access.
Good evening. I now call to order the 2020 Town of Aronacoid Budget Hearing. Visitors are invited to join the board members in rising to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. Councilwoman Hushler Ray. Councilman Perticon.
Here.
Councilwoman Romeo.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Yep.
Supervisor Sealy.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have this special town board meeting tonight for the purposes of having our annual budget hearing. A little background on our process. Over the summer, as is customary, the supervisor works with staff and department heads to develop what's known as a tentative budget, which is presented to the board in early October. From there, the board meets over the course of two nights to go through virtually every line item of the budget. Revisions are made after that through input and feedback from the board. And that leads us to the preliminary budget, which we have tonight for the public to comment on. A few broad strokes, and then we'll call open the public hearing. The 2020 budget for the Aronacoid, as always, is a balanced spending plan, which continues to make critical investments and sustain and enhance the quality of life in Aronacoid, while once again proudly staying well, well, well below the property tax cap. The 2020 preliminary budget is funded in part by a town tax rate of $6.17 per thousand of assessed value. I'll note that town taxes generally are the smallest portion of your tax bill. That doesn't mean that taxes couldn't be lower, but generally on every dollar you pay in taxes, about 13 cents of that goes to fund town operations. Since 2015, the tax levy has increased by an average of 1.1% a year. So again, we point to the many critical investments we've made while keeping taxes well below the general 2% tax cap, but even further below that. As the town is nearly developed, we continue to be confronted with the reality of a relatively flat tax base. We continue to see growth in employee benefits that we are contractually obligated to fund, and we do fund those, as well as the considerable costs of constructing our newly opened Department of Public Works facility, which was necessitated by the Christmas Eve 2016 fire. In this budget, we look to address the cost of health care in 2020 by proposing to enroll in the Finger Lakes Municipal Health Insurance Trust, which should bend the long-term cost curve of employee health insurance while not diminishing benefits. I think my board members join me in agreeing that fiscal discipline should not come at the expense of seizing to invest in our community and finding new ways to enhance government's level of service for our residents. The budget again increases the number of funded officers in our police department. We continue to invest in maintaining our efforts to maintain and improve our infrastructure. This past year, we did three times the amount of paving that was done in 2014, and that's a level we'll look to sustain in 2020 as funded by this budget. The budget also increases funding to our code enforcement unit with a specific emphasis on managing zombie homes, vacant homes. In 2020, we will use a grant secured from the state to pursue legal action against bank-owned zombie homes that are not maintained. In sum, Aronacoid's fiscal health is strong. That was verified by State Comptroller's recent report that the town's fiscal stress is nominal and even improved since last year. This budget continues that fiscal discipline to which taxpayers have grown accustomed to and should expect nothing less, but also looks to the future to build an even better Aronacoid. So I want to thank our town staff, former comptroller Sealy, current comptroller Diana Marsh, and our board members for their due diligence in reviewing this. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first and only public hearing of the evening?
Public hearing 11 STV 2019-1 upon the matter of request to adopt the 2020 budget.
Have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move.
In a second.
Second.
All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe we have one resident here tonight, Mr. Goldblatt. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Jeff Goldblatt, 128 Parkside Crescent. Getting over the worst cold I've ever had in my sorry existence, there's something really bad going around. I'm not the only one, so bear with me. This is the 28th presentation of the shopping list of savings. As per usual, I may, for purposes of clarity, mention certain companies by name. I do not have any employment or financial relationship with any such firm. We'll begin with Parks and Rec. Since the July 4th event began, there's only been one year, 2016, where there was site-wide recycling. We've been relying on these old barrels that either kill the grass or look rather disheveled. And they're not efficient cost-wise, as somebody has to stack, store, wash these, and schlep around another container to get them empty during the event. There's a more cost-efficient way to deal with this, and that is Clearstream Racks, which is the brand name. They have two different kinds. The one that I show here is for cans and bottles. And there's a second kind called Trash Max that sits alongside of this for capturing non-recyclable trash. They're collapsible, easy to transport, and all you have to do, once you've got them in the racks, is just simply get the bags and put them in. This would also help to reduce the roll-off that's being secured through the townwide bid for refusing recycling services that should be able to be downsized if you're recycling appropriately. The barrels in and of themselves, if DPW has a use for them, fine. If not, there's a company who advertises through the Western New York Materials Exchange called Harbison Brothers in Buffalo who buys and sells these. There may be people who want them for their leaves in the fall. But regardless, after 50, 60 years of using those barrels, there's a better way to do this and less expensively. Also covered in Public Works is grass cutting. I would again suggest that the town take a look at the Penfield bid. They put this work out for bid throughout their various properties. Seventeen sites, in fact, covering 33 acres. And this could be done in addition to the zombie homes that the supervisor recently mentioned. The cemetery. This is a sideline enterprise that's not core to day-to-day life in our town. Currently, this is costing over a quarter of a million dollars, with revenue making up about half. In my opinion, it's certainly time to take a look at talking to Strath Stonemore Partners, publicly held company that manages these, and especially for non-for-profit entities, including a number of church parishes around the country. This could also be done in conjunction with the city. We always hear the city and the towns need to do more things together. Here's a golden opportunity. I know the city will demure on Mount Hope, but Riverside is not a historic cemetery, so maybe there could be a further enticement for this firm to come in and help both municipalities out. In terms of building maintenance, while I see that the cost for maintaining this building has declined and rather significantly, the cost has gone up for the Public Safety Building, and we have other such facilities that are in need of this work. I would again direct you to the town of Penfield and their bid. They've been successfully doing this for a few years, and I'm sure there's a number of firms in the public sector who would be interested in bidding on this work. This isn't to say that the people who are here are doing a bad job. It's just a way to save some money. Solid waste.
I was gonna say, it's been five minutes. We haven't had any visual aids.
Oh, you're getting them now.
I know.
So I'll try to kind of build up to it.
Gotcha, okay.
In terms of brush, I would again, and especially now that you have your new Public Works facility, to take a look at air burners. These can handle up to 20 tons of stuff per hour, and they generate, in this particular unit that's shown in this particular ad, about 100 kilowatts of electrical energy and 1 milliwatt of thermal energy to heat buildings such as your new Public Works building. It can dry materials, and it can also clean water. And it'd be a more efficient way and potentially less expensive over time to handle brush once it's emptied out of the trucks. I'll talk about trucks later. Now let's talk about hauler licensing. This is rather problematic. Given the unfortunate accident that took place last year, I was before this board in a rare springtime appearance to discuss this situation. Since that time, the silence has been deafening. The situation that involved Mrs. Diana is not unique because there's no follow-up as far as who's in town and who's doing what and what kind of equipment is on the road. The town of Grease has the right to inspect whatever they put on the roads. My guess is the truck that's sitting in your impound area never rolled through the town of Grease, because if they saw that, it wouldn't go. Just like the situation with young Michael Lynch, this is really no different. The town has not shown how something good can come out of something bad, and that, I believe, needs to happen. By my count, there are about 19 roll-off-only firms that are in town at some point or another during the course of a calendar year, and four other firms that are mini haulers, such as the best-known one, Franchise of 1-800-GOT-JUNK. I will give a shout-out, though, to two firms who decided to finally come in and license up. Oaks Roll Off and DC Roll Off, and as we all know, DC does not stand for Duck Container. Nonetheless, we have lost revenue, a little humor once in a while. You have lost, you have 20 years of lost revenue and a loss of life. I would suggest that has to change. Now, most of the firms, from what I've seen in my travels, have perfectly fine and suitable equipment. They don't have to be showrooms sparkling and shiny, but they need to pass a DOT inspection. But it doesn't account for this particular firm, whoever they are, as we talked about last year, with wood covering up gaping holes in the metal. I don't think it's the same firm. It may be someone else. But since there's no name or phone number on here, who knows?
Where was that picture taken?
It was taken 31018 on Ridgeview Drive. This was in the state sale that I was at the day before. Saw this, and it was a Saturday, came back Sunday with my camera and took these pictures.
Thank you.
The code needs to be changed. We already stipulate that trucks need to have a name and phone number on them. Roll-offs and dumpsters, and those are two different kinds of equipment, sometimes people conflate those, need to carry the same stipulation. That would help track down whoever the person is who owns this crappy equipment. There are dumpsters in town with no name and phone number on. If there's a problem, the fire marshal wouldn't know who to talk to. Code enforcement wouldn't know who to talk to, and it's not that burdensome of a thing. There's about four or five different companies that cater to the solid waste industry in the country, so no one can say, "Oh, they're so expensive." They're not. Additionally, there is no follow-up if a problem happens. The situation that happened with this particular roll-off firm, if there was no camera, you would never know who to talk to. But it's also other firms. For example, when Heberly Disposal was falling apart, I called the information in, and there was no response from the town. When Farah Rubbish fell apart a couple of years ago, I sent in not one, but four memoranda on what was happening, and one nearly caused a serious traffic accident on Hudson Avenue. The response I got was, "Well, Mr. Goldblatt, there's someone from the town needs to see this." "Well, I'm sorry. I was never issued one of those Star Trek devices. Beam me up, Mr. Speaker, and aim it at this building." It also implies that my word is no good, which I resent. The DEC, however, was interested in the Farah information because they had already opened a case file on them, and they have collapsed. The bottom line to this is it is not being administered. Even today, walking by a painted-over truck from Casella, which used to belong to Youngblood, there's a Town of Aronacoid sticker, a license sticker, from five years ago. Who's minding the store? If you check with the other towns that license, which is Grease, Henrietta, and Webster, licensing goes to the town clerk's office, and they each do things a little differently. I'll volunteer for the other stuff, since I'd like to think I have a good working knowledge in the solid waste industry, and I won't ask for money and be accused of busting the budget. Highway one. There's still issues with sidewalks for those of us who bike and/or walk. I would again suggest contacting this firm, Concrete Solutions. They claim that they can repair a concrete sidewalk by lifting up the concrete, cleaning out the tree roots underneath, and replacing the pad. And they claim that they can do this for about a half to two-thirds less the cost than new concrete. They should at least be brought in for a trial to see if their claim holds up. Also, last year, we talked about a company called Craftco. This is being used in Niagara County, their highway department, for patching potholes, which there are still plenty. On some streets this year, I know they're doing their best to keep up, but for those of us who bike, it's like Lombard Street in San Francisco to make sure you don't miss, you don't get hit the wrong way. But this unit that they're showing here, and this is from the March 25th edition of the newspaper of record, which is the Buffalo News, costs about less than 50 grand. It creates a self-leveling, fast-drying hot liquid into the pothole, which is quickly spread and then dusted with a small bit of crushed gravel. From what I understand, the news hasn't reported anything else on here. I tried contacting someone involved with this, and they were relatively pleased with the results. Again, it's a cost-saving move. It's worth a try, if nothing else, on a trial basis.
Which municipality was using that?
This is Niagara County Highway Department.
That's Niagara. Thank you.
Highway three. In terms of morbidities, this particular truck, called an SAT truck with a ground scoop option, might be a better way to deal with morbidities on the streets, especially larger animals such as a deer. It might be a little more efficient than trying to do this with a pickup truck and a ramp. Perkins Manufacturing is the company who does this. In terms of picking up concrete and bricks from people who are doing their own, do-it-yourself project, getting this mount up on an existing dump truck, you're now running one truck instead of two, a high lift and a truck to pick this stuff up around town. And just like brush, there really should be, in my opinion, a small user fee, because not everybody's using this, just to help defray some of the costs. Also, again, from the Buffalo News, I would again bring up the town of Hartland, New York, who is using not only surplus equipment for their DPW needs, but this remake of a 2009 freightliner army vehicle that was turned into a dump truck for the same type of uses that we have. And the savings, according to their town supervisor Ross Annabelle, was about $100,000. Buying new is nice. I guess a small thanks to the, very small, tiny thanks to the fire we've gotten away from. Everything has to be brand-new. Brand recondition will help hold the line on costs, if not further reduce.
And there's money in the budget to allow us to go to auction. So we hear you loud and clear, and our fleet replacement schedule is dependent on used vehicles since we lost so many.
Also, in terms of brush collection, and especially after last week's fun and frivolity, you have one 40-yard grapple truck that has worked out pretty well, from what I have seen. You still have two smaller ones, which could be replaced with one more 40-yard truck. That would give you 80 yards capacity across town to pick up brush, whether Mother Nature acts up or not. An option is to look at a, excuse me, 40-yard compactor with a load box. There's two different kinds of those. One developed by, commonly known as a Carrato can, named for the gentleman who invented these originally. Here's another one by Bain Lift Systems, but now you're not transporting air. Everything compacts to go to your site. The Seabreeze Water District continues to cost us money. And by my look at the numbers in the budget, my pages are sideways, you're at best breaking even or if not losing money. I mean, for example, in next year's budget, I see a $60,000 figure for unmetered water, whatever that is. I would again suggest that it's time to take a look at either a tuck-in acquisition with the Monroe County Water Authority. If that can't be done, there are three publicly held companies the town can talk to: American States Water Company, American Water Company, and Aqua America. That's about a million dollars' worth of cost that could go away if somebody else takes this over. It's the same water that all the rest of us drink, and it's a sideline enterprise that is not really, since it's Monroe County Water, I don't understand why this has to be special and different.
For the record, the cost of Seabreeze Water is not borne by the town tax levies. It's borne by their rate players, just as the rest of the town funds the Monroe County Water Authority. So that's not impacting the town's bottom line. We are the treasurer of the Seabreeze Water Authority as mandated by the State Comptroller, but that's included in our budget, but that is their own budget, which we approve. So I just wanted to be clear that that's not a cost borne by the town, per se.
Well, but there's also operational costs that figure into this, too. Again, it's a money.
No, it's not. We actually get paid by them to administer their.
There was a time when that wasn't necessarily the case, but nonetheless.
Probably would, if we had a choice, we probably would not serve as their billing administrator, but that's what we've been directed to do by the comptroller.
Code enforcement, which I see has gotten some enhanced revenue in the budget. However, there are still plenty of problems and a lot of catching up that needs to be done. For example, the town still has an issue with house numbers. This went on the books 25 years ago, and there are still plenty of homes around town where you can't see their numbers to save your life, from the street, from the sidewalk, script writing. And we don't need any more tragedies before someone comes back and says, "Why doesn't this house have numbers we can't read from the street?" I'm sure your police will confirm this. I'm sure emergency services will confirm this. This needs to be addressed once and for all. Besides zombie properties, you have commercial properties. These were taken at the Georgetown Plaza, and I mean, trash and garbage all over the place. "We'll add it to the list, sir." Well, okay. And it's ongoing. Back in the day, to get over the hump and get caught up, the town actually hired crossing guards to go around and collect code violations so they could be categorized and dealt with, at least on a triage basis. Maybe that needs to be done once again. There's also dumpster enclosures. This went on the books in the early 90s again, and there's about three dozen of these commercial sites around town. I think only one that I've seen in my general travels where something was finally enclosed. It attracts illegal dumping, and again, when there are situations where the containers are not labeled, whether it's code enforcement, fire marshal, whomever, who are you going to call? It would also, by addressing the missing enclosures, that would also generate sales tax revenue and building permit revenue on commercial properties. Lastly, we have the former Ridge Road Library, which was fortunately available. Lastly, we have the former Ridge Road Library, which was fortunately available to us after the Christmas fire. At the end of August, at year resolution 2019-209, this board accepted a bid from CGP Acquisition to acquire the property. I know this was the long-held dream, was to get that property back on the tax rolls. However, we were promised from this podium repeatedly, "We're going to get $1,004,000 for that property, sir. We wind up with $875,000. Not chump change by any means, but we're out a half a million dollars plus." I don't want to suggest where they might wind up coming from, but that's a hole. It's nice that it's finally going to get back on the tax rolls. It begins to deal with the tons of thousands of square feet that are sitting empty on the ridge, and which is not the town's fault, it's just the fault of the retail ice age that is ongoing nationally. But that was disappointing to see, and once again, we wind up on the short end. One other thing, getting back to licensing. As I mentioned last year, this is the guide as far as the idea of, "Well, we send notices out to these small haulers, and we don't hear back." This is your bible. Dear contractor, I'm gonna just make it, the Town of Aronacoite doesn't care who you hire for your waste hauling needs, however, they do need to be licensed in per Section 192 of the code. Attach as an application form. Please have your hauler fill this out and submit it with payment to Town Hall by such-and-such date. Love and kisses, Town of Aronacoite. I just composed the letter for you. This would go to all general contractors, roofing contractors, the state sale people, and you might be able to suck up some of the missing in action by going this route, rather than just blindly sending notices out to people you know aren't going to respond. And with that, as my voice just makes it, that is my message.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Thank you, Mr. Goldblatt. Hope you're feeling better.
I hope so, too. This has been going on all fall.
Would anybody else in the public wish to address the board on the matter before the board? Seeing none, hearing none, I will take a motion to close public hearing?
Moved.
In a second.
Second.
All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is thus closed. This concludes our body of work for tonight's special town board meeting. Our next town board workshop is next Tuesday, November 12, at 4:00 p.m. here in the Broderick Meeting Room. The next regular town board meeting is Tuesday, November 19, 7:00 p.m. here in the Broderick Meeting Room. I will now take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
In a second.
Second.
If you are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.